Council will call the meeting to order for the record. It is July 12, 2022 at 6:03 PM. We'll begin this evening's River City Council meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next time is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge. For the community invocation, this evening, I'm going to turn this over to Councilman Hoagland for a moment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We don't have anyone to do the invocation tonight. However, I just wanted to comment. We, many of you are aware, we lost Matt Schultz this week. And for those that don't know, Matt is, would present quite often before the city council on developments and whatnot. And he's been doing that for a number of years. And it was a very sudden and tragic loss. And, and just please remember his family in prayer. The picture I saw was him holding his two twin newborn babies. And so it's, it's a difficult time for the family. An accident that occurred and that's just, it just shows how life, how fragile life is. And you just never know. So just remember his family and his colleagues whenever you can. So just one of those things that when you deal with people, you get to know them a bit and enjoy their work. And Matt was somebody who, when he said this will get done, you knew it would get done. So that's, that's a great thing. And he will certainly be abuzz by everyone here in this, in the, in the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Hoagland. Up now is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move adoption of the agenda as published.
Second motion?
Have a motion and second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay. Yes, have it. And the agenda is adopted. Accept as the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move approval of the consent agenda and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Yes, have it. And the consent agenda is agreed to. There were no items moved from the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone to send up under public forum?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, then we will move right into item 20, Department Commission reports. First item up is Fire Department fiscal year 2022 net zero budget amendment in the amount of $3,450. And this over to Deputy Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is just a simple net zero budget amendment for $3,450 for Pam, for public education. This is money that was donated through our smoke detector program. People in the community that donated for our car seat programs. So this is just taking that money and turning it into funds that Pam can spend on additional public education stuff. And she is here. If you'd like to ask her some questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Move that we approve the net zero budget amendment in the amount of $3,450 as presented.
Have a motion and a second to prove item 20, which is the net zero budget amendment in the amount of $3,450. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Strater.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Next item up is item 21, which is the Fire Department fiscal year 2022 budget amendment in the amount of $2,2,785 for the purchase of a ladder truck. Turn this over to Chief Bloom.
Mr. Mayor and Council, yeah, the budget amendment before you is in consideration of the FY '23 budget, that there wasn't any discussion or substantial discussion on the purchase of a second ladder truck for the service of Meridian. However, after our first and then second budget discussion, it became apparent to us through conversations through our peers, manufacturing, who we purchase our apparatus from, that there was more than water cooler talk and a significant chance of a significant raise in the price as we have presented to you in your budget, that you, that you saw the budget increase, I'm sorry, the product being increased between three and seven percent and a definitive, a definitive increase after that. So what we're asking for is if counsel is in agreement with purchasing the apparatus early, saving the city anywhere between 68,000 or 70,000, $140,000 definitively between now and September. And the last thing that I would like to do is be in front of counsel the first of October and describing to you the price adjustment that occurred and the money that was potentially saved. So that is the reason for the request at this time.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel, any questions? And do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
As item 21, I move we approve the budget amendment in the amount of $2,2,785 as presented for the purchase of the ladder truck.
Have a motion and a second to prove item 21. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Strater.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries, and item is agreed to.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Chief. Our final budget amendment of the evening is with the Police Department for fiscal year 2022 budget amendment in the amount of $2,000. I will turn, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is a $52,000 budget amendment to replace a police car that was totaled in an accident back in May. And we have filed the proper paperwork to get insurance reimbursement after our deductible. And I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Cap. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Just want to verify that I understood that the insurance would, check would come in from ICRMP at about 47,000 or so. So we have about a $7,000 difference. Is that correct?
Yes, that's my understanding. And Bill might be able to actually shed more light on it. I just know that we've done the, started the process to, to make the insurance claim for the, the car.
Mr. Members of the council, I can tell you, it's, so the insurance replaces the value of the car as it is today. And this, I don't remember how old this car was.
It is a 2021.
Yeah. So, so they do the present value of the car now. Our deductible is $2,500. So minus the 2,500 and the present value. So the car obviously has depreciated slightly. And then they'll, so it'll be probably between 45,000 to 48,000, something like that.
Thank you. Any additional questions? If not.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Was the equipment, are we able to take most of the equipment out and put it in that?
Yes, that's my understanding, that most of the equipment we can transfer to the new vehicle. And we're buying, the way I understand this, exactly the same thing, a Ford Explorer Hybrid. So it should be pretty close.
Good.
And it'll be here next week.
Maybe next year. I don't, I don't know.
Counsel, any additional questions, or do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Move we approve the budget amendment in the amount of $52,000 for the unit 119 vehicle replacement.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second to prove item 22 in the amount of $52,000. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Strater.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh. Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Moving on to this evening's action items, first item up is a public hearing continuing from June 28th for Center Point Mixed Use MDA H 2022-0035. We will continue this public hearing with comments from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. I would like to note on your hearing outline, I forgot to change the dates on the possible motions. So don't repeat exactly what it reads. It still says June 28th. So I've just, quick refresher, this project is located near the southwest corner, essentially surrounding the southwest corner of Eustick and Eagle Road. At the previous council hearing, two weeks ago, there was a lot of discussion about the parking in the center of the development for the proposed future multifamily use. There is a lot of discussion about making the center area self-park and then removing the parking on the west side, west of Center Point Way. The applicant responded by proposing this revised concept. So just quick, kind of back and forth. See what catches your eye. The applicant removed the four-story from all the buildings in the center, the three buildings in the center, and then included a new two-story building along the west boundary of similar design and function. But it is two stories. So then you have the two-story building on the west. Everything self-parks there with the carports and the open surface parking on the west side of Center Point. And you have the three buildings in the center, which is also self-parked according to the applicant. And then everything on the east side is well in excess. So it's hard to see on this, but 304 stalls are required here, 304 are provided. And then on the east side, you have, I think it's 59 or 60 stalls and nearly 120 are provided. Doesn't look like it, but I did count them, and that is accurate. The main points that I wanted to discuss were just these two things. I would recommend, if counsel approves this, to strike, staff recommended provision C.6 as the applicant has made the revisions, and then add a new provision with the potential of the buildings being moved forward and going to the CUP next. I do understand that the applicant has pictures showing new renderings of what the three-story buildings will look like comparative to the four-story. But it is my understanding that they are all three stories and below. I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Counsel, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Joe, in reading the packet, there was a new letter that came from, I believe, Mr. Grant. And he talked about a masonry wall that had been agreed to, to by prior applicant. And they want to see a masonry wall with this project as well. Has there been any discussion about that?
Councilman Hoagland, there's not been any discussion. My understanding with the applicant, because it's been asked by counsel, and I think it was brought up in other discussions with the neighborhood meetings. The, my understanding is the applicant doesn't have any issue with doing that. They are providing a 25-foot buffer as well, which is not required by code. So we can add that as a provision as well, if counsel would like with your motion. But I did not specifically discuss that with the applicant, no.
Counsel, any additional questions for staff? Okay, then invite the applicant to come forward. And you recognize for up to 15 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. And Joe, you, we've got a presentation there. Thanks. So Mayor and City Council members, Deborah Nelson, 601 West Bannock Street in Boise, here on behalf of the applicant MGM Meridian LLC. And I am actually just going to be here to help drive the presentation and answer questions, of course, and also have Brandon McDougald here with me from Kimley Horn, in case you have questions for him. But Mike Maffia is going to join us remotely and make a presentation. He was sorry you couldn't be here in person, but he had a long scheduled family vacation that he had to drive to Wi-Fi access to present to you. So he's making a big effort to be here in the way he can. So I'll, I'll drive and he'll join by Zoom if you're able to add him in, Chris.
And he's able to unmute anytime.
Great. Can you, can you hear and see me?
We, we can see you. And just make sure you speak close to the mic.
All right. Good, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for your time this evening. I just want to follow up on, on some of the points Joe made. Following our previous meeting, we went back to the drawing board to address the council's concerns of self-parking, kind of each pod, really focusing on the area between Center Point, occasion, and then really working hard to see what we could do with that area west of Center Point. And those were the kind of primary objections. And we went back and, Deborah, if you could move to the next slide, what we, what we did is we shifted the three large buildings to the east. We lopped off an entire floor, which was about 10, 10.2 feet. And one thing we did is we removed that interior drive aisle. So now we have this kind of self-contained amenity space. And actually, like this solution, I think there's some, some benefits. It's, there's less conflict zones with drive aisles. It's probably, it's more intimate. And, and I think from a security standpoint, it will have some benefits. So I think that is a nice solution there. And there, there's smaller scale buildings that I think help with that transition. We, we updated the renderings and the sections, so you could see that, because those were comments that I think it also addressed. We also, to resolve, address the concern of the large parking field to west of Center Point, we added a low two-story building there with a, with a buffer between the residents. And I think that will, not just the landscape buffer, but the building itself will create a nice buffer to the traffic. So these three pods now self-park and actually west, pardon me, east of occasion now has 60 surplus stalls, which in working with Joe, there's always been comments about having extra parking. And that will give us a nice kind of surplus on that side of the occasion. Just one quick comment, you know, for multifamily development, four-story buildings, they have a great deal of efficiency to operate. And so this was, you know, we lost about 18% of our, our, our units. And, but we're fine doing that as a concession. And, you know, hopefully this, this addresses the concerns. Yeah, this just kind of illustrates the, the lower building that we've lost the 10-plus feet. I think we were well screened before this were, this be improved from that. And the subsequent section shows the two-story apartment building. This is the, the building west of Center Point to, to Leslie Drive residence. And then here are the updated renderings. And, you know, I feel it does look more nestled into the site and lower in scale to help with that transition. So that's, that's my, that's my summary. And we worked really hard on this and glad to answer questions that you may have.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Councilman Hoagland.
On, like you had mentioned, the 18% less, fewer, fewer units, is that just for the center three? Or does that include even adding the, the two-story to the west?
That, that's net on the whole project.
Thank you.
Counsel, Ms. Strater.
Thanks, Mike. I, maybe I missed it, but there was a comment that was provided. Are you going to extend the masonry wall on the west side?
I'd, I'd be glad to do that, to create, you know, an additional sound wall buffer.
Thank you.
Counsel, any additional questions? Okay. Thank you, Deb. Thank you, Mike. This is a public hearing. Ms. Quirk, do we have anyone to send up to provide testimony this time?
Yes, Janet Bailey.
If there's anybody online that would like to provide testimony, please use the raise your hand feature, so we can bring you in as well.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Once again, I wanted to drive around the neighborhood.
If you could say your name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Janet Bailey, 2925 North Center Point.
Thank you.
On, I drove through the neighborhood because of this traffic issue that, from these drawings, it's not going to fix it. That west parking lot, everybody, again, I, I feel like a broken record, but everybody speeds from Eustick onto Center Point. If they have people crossing, there's going to be a bigger mess. And when I, last time I was here, said that we were the traffic study, I meant that we are living that. We see it. We are there seeing and going through this. There's so much traffic. And Ms. Nelson, last time I did, she had said there's no thoroughfare through there. Yes, there is. If you go straight down Center Point, you can go around and around the edge, come out by Discount Tire, which makes just more of a speedway down Center Point. I drove through over by the homes on, the new ones, behind Jimmy John's, both of those. I drove through over by the homes on the new ones, behind Jimmy John's, both of those. And people are parking on the curbs. So there's only room enough for one coming down Center Point. They're parking on both sides of the street. There's only room for one. So when you bring in all these extra parking spots, it's going to flow into the neighborhood. We do have a walking path. And now the foot traffic back there has increased with all those people in those apartments. There will be increased dogs. We have issue with dogs off leashes and dogs making a mess that nobody pick up. It's a big problem. So the influx of foot traffic, more people doing the walking path. It's going to be a bigger mess. And then one quick question. Are these upscale apartments? Are they luxury apartments or are they part of the affordable housing that's going on in Meridian? I mean, I mean, they look pretty generic to me. They don't look like they're upscale. They just look like apartments. Which I think that could affect the values of our homes, which is our retirement homes. There's a lot of retired people in there. So I'm, I'm just really passionate about maintaining a lifestyle in there that I thought when we moved in would be. But it's, it's slipping away with all this added traffic and people. So I just wanted to clarify. I, I really am curious as to what type of apartments these are. I think that will carry a lot of weight.
And we'll let the developer speak to that.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, online is JR. And JR, you can unmute yourself.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and council members. I really appreciate the chance to speak. First, I would like to thank Councilman Pro and Councilman Strater for their thoughts in there on the last meeting. And feeling like they're standing up for our community. I really do appreciate you guys on that. And all of you, as a rule, I do appreciate you guys. I also wanted to thank Mike for taking the time to redesign what your concept and going to the three, three story units in the middle instead of four. That, that is much more plausible for the neighboring community. I do want to take exception to having where I do back up to directly to the new two story unit. That puts that entire upper row of units, every one of them staring directly into my backyard. Originally this, I was told 12 years ago when I bought this property, this property was going to be commercial, non retail commercial. Not residential, but non retail commercial. That was what I understood by this. This is what I was, I bought the property as. Having apartments in my back door, backyard is going to greatly reduce the value of my property, the sellability. The vast majority of people that are going to buy nearly a million dollar property are not going to want to have apartments staring in their backyard. I also agree with the traffic issues. Those will continue to get worse. Safety of the kids, all of that nature. Again, this has all been discussed prior. I do appreciate that. And for the remainder of it, I will yield my time if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, JR. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Pearl.
JR, I'm just looking at the lineup of that section with your lots and it looks like that only lines up to about two lots. So what are the sizes, approximate sizes of those lots?
Mine is
And your neighbor?
Are you talking on linear footage on the back edge, back line?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Are you talking linear footage on the back line of my lot?
Yes, or just the, just the acre just fine?
Mine is right, basically right at an acre. The neighbor to the north of me is approximately three quarters of an acre. And so I have about 200, roughly 250 feet of back frontage right there that directly aligns with this property.
Okay.
And that, that was the vast majority of that complex staring directly into my yard.
Thank you.
And, and even with the 25 foot buffer, that is not, they're still going to be there even with a wall with everything else that's been proposed. There is no way to avoid that line of sight on a two story unit right into my yard. And you can see that on the other homes going to the south that are two story homes. Those homes with the wall and a much greater setback of around 80 feet is actually have direct line, direct line of sight into everybody else's backyards. But on a residential, on a home, you're talking a couple of windows. You're not talking several units.
Here, just for the record, I'd, were you able to give your name and address for the record?
Sorry, Mayor, I forgot to do that. Jared Schofield, 1566 North Leslie Way.
Thank you. Counsel, any additional questions? Okay, thank you very much. Is there any bails that like to provide testimony? Okay. If you're online, use the raise your hand feature, please. Say your name and address for the record.
My name's Wendy McKinney. I live at 6173 North Silver Elm Way in Meridian. And I have a presentation he's going to pull up.
Mr. Quirk, if you can stop the time until we get the presentation pulled up.
You go to the third slide. Thank you. All right. So we see the new and the old designs here. I think it's wonderful that they've dropped the height of everything and that is very useful. But there's some other issues. Next slide. Thank you. So we see the parking has changed quite a bit and there's, there's a lot of benefits to that, but we all know that typically a two bedroom apartment that has more than two adults has three cars. And so it's going to spill into the neighborhood. Next slide. This is kind of a crazy, I tried to get it right, but it's not completely right. If you can see the one on the left, this is what JR showed me. He's the HOA Vice President. He wasn't able to be here tonight. But this is one of the biggest issues we have here and no one's addressed it yet. These are private roads paid for by the HOA. The residents and the businesses are all paying for all of these roads south of this huge apartment complex. Now, we all know that none of them will ever use any of these private roads once they're there. If it's a gated community. If this builder would like to put in a gated community to protect all of their private roads, I think the residents would be fine with that. The one on the left isn't quite as good as the one on the, on, sorry, the one on the right isn't quite as accurate as the one on the left. So you see on the left, there's ACHD goes all the way straight down. And then he comes around, right? And then you can go out there. Great. Unless these inner ones are protected, those roads are going to be paid for by taxpayers. That's an unfair tax burden. That is completely and totally an abuse of the rights of this situation. So next slide, please. Please address that. Sorry, I don't know how to erase that. So parking overflow into the neighborhood, traffic is going to be increased beyond capabilities. Privacy overlooking fences, we already talked about. Schools are already overcrowded. There's been some letters into you about that. Safety. If you have a lot of older people and young kids in here, are they going to jump on their bikes and go across Eagle to get to the park? They have to have enough space there to play and to enjoy their apartments. Next. Next. So the compass actually gave some recommendations. I'm sure you looked at those on the 30th. They asked for better parking and some of that has been fulfilled. Next. And then they asked for bicycle parking and to have the bus jumped in. If you can just go two down. So we just appreciate your help, City Council, to help the average taxpayer who vote for you to help us understand how to make this a safe cohesive community. We want them to build on their land. We want them to be good neighbors. And we want this corner, which is going to infect all of Meridian, to be safe and a good place for people to live. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next is Joe. Joe, you can unmute yourself.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Say your name and address for the record, please, Joe.
Yes, thank you. My name, my name is Joe White. I live at 1598 North Leslie Way. Appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak with you guys on the council, the mayor and Mr. Mike Maffia. I don't have a ton to add other than I am the neighbor to the north of JR Schofield. And we moved in about the same time as them. And I share all the similar concerns that he has where we're going to have way too many people gawking in our backyard. It's going to create a situation I see with, with schooling. These kids, I assume, will go to the same place as my children go. And I don't see a great way for them to get to that school. I could see them popping fences through our properties, which I wouldn't have a problem with, but it could be, it could end up causing a situation down the road. I'm not opposed to necessarily some sort of residential housing development being in that area. I just think it needs to be designed a little differently. And I, and I agree 100% with what Jared was saying where we were told this property behind us was not going to be zoned that way. And I'm honestly concerned with, with having that many residents, you know, in my backyard. So I, I appreciate your time. I just wanted to add my, my voice of approval with JR's.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Thank you, Joe. Is there anybody else that would like to write testimony on this item at this time?
You have one more. Idaho Wildflower, you can unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Julie Verba. I live at 3005 North LeBlanc Way. And can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to, to give my voice here. One of the questions that I had was along Picard, there is currently a fence that has been put up by our subdivision. And I'm wondering if this new apartment complex is going to help maintain that fence or if they're going to be putting up their own fence in conjunction with that, because that's an additional expense that we would be concerned with. And then we were also wondering about the color scheme that's going to be for these apartments. Are they going to be kind of in line with what's currently going on in the subdivision or in the area? Or are they similar to what's kind of going on over by the village? Some of the darker colors, that was kind of a concern that we had. And of course, the traffic is a concern for us and Center Point because there are cars that speed onto, from Center Point on Picard. And they run the stop sign there right by in front of our house all the time. We've got Jimmy John's that goes through there. And I could sit all day and watch how many times Jimmy John goes through there and they just kind of, they don't stop. They do kind of a hesitant type of look and then they go. So I can just see that being more increased traffic with members of the apartment complex. And that's basically my concerns that I had.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Thank you very much. If there anybody else would like to provide testimony online, use the raise your hand feature or in the audience. Seeing none, I invite the applicant to close.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll make a few points and then Mike can jump in if he's got additional points to add. It's, it's, I think maybe the primary point that we've heard from all of the commoners is about, is about traffic. So I'll start there. Obviously, by reducing 18% of the units, we have significantly reduced the, the traffic impact on the neighbors. In, in particular, you know, we talked about this pretty extensively in the last hearing, but part of what the traffic analysis did was look at what the impact of potential cut through is on an adjacent neighborhood as is appropriate. And determined that that was minimal. Center Point is a public street, aging the private street going through our development. And so the neighbors do come through our development as well to access their property. And our site will have access out to Eustick and has all of the access they need legally and to serve emergency use. And again, the traffic analysis found that there would be minimal cut through to the south. But overall, lower traffic from this change here. As to the, the apartments, these will be market rate apartments, not affordable housing. They will be attractive as you can see from the renderings and as there was a lot of testimony during the last hearing, that these are highly amenitized and quality developments with extensive buffers and landscaping. And really a fine design on the leasing office to try to bring something forward to the street there with Eustick. Looking to the, the comments to the west, the city council did ask for us to have something there that wasn't just parking, which is seemed appropriate. And Joe, working with staff, was very clear that that should be capped at two stories, as you can see from his condition of approval. So it is a compatible use to the west. Maybe a fact that's really important to have you understand is that our building will be over 100 feet from the closest building. So not only are we providing that 25 foot setback on our property that, as Joe noted, wasn't required by code. But the existing buildings are set back 75 to 80 feet. So it is a significant buffer. And because it's only two stories, the trees that will be planted in our significant landscape buffer will provide screening so that the neighbors to our west don't have homes looking down on them. It'll be a compatible height at a significant distance with significant landscape buffer in between. As far as there's a question about the color scheme, I think that's shown, at least illustrated. Obviously, this has to go through a conditional use permit process and design review process, but we did provide renderings to give some analysis or some visual to the community and the council of what these might look like. And they, they are very attractive. So with that, I'd see if Mike has anything he wants to add.
Great. Thank you, Deborah. I, I think I just add briefly that, you know, I'm not a production builder. I do a limited amount of projects. I do quality work. I care a lot about creating authentic experiences. We do that with good elevations, quality elevations. The, the color palette on this is, you know, kind of historical colors. But the vernacular is more of a modern craftsman that I think blends well. We decided not to go with the flat roof. We thought pitch roof was, you know, related, responded better to the residential. So these are things that we care a lot and think a lot about. The landscaping will, will try to, you know, emulate, reflect that high desert landscape that so many people, you know, live and appreciate in this area. And, you know, those are the details that create a great experience. There'll be a lot of amenities in this development. So those are just, you know, some of the, some of the items I think about. And to address some of the feedback on design. And Deb, I think you touched on, on some of the, all of the comments. One point on the traffic, this was a, did reduce, I think, over 1900 or 1900 trips a day from the previous use, which was a reduction of 40%. And, you know, I know it's, you know, they're not always the most reliable, accurate tools, but the best we have. And it's, it's still a pretty substantial reduction. So thank you very much. Appreciate your time this evening.
With that, we, we'd ask for your approval. We're in support of staff's recommended conditions. And stand for any further questions you have.
Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, questions? Counsel, Mr. Strater.
Thank you. Thanks, Deb. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate the modifications. I feel like this is getting a lot closer to the scale that's appropriate for this location. Terms of transition, appreciate the landscape buffer. Appreciate that the west side building would be two stories. Can you talk to me about the trees? You know, when we plant new trees and developments, they're really small. They're not going to screen very much. Do you guys think you could put some larger caliper trees, more mature trees or something that would provide the neighbor with more of that landscape buffer earlier than waiting for like little tiny trees? Thanks.
You know, I, I can speak to that. There seems to be about a happy medium where too small, it takes years to adjust and start producing healthy growth. And then some of the larger containers. And then some of the larger containers take longer to stabilize. You know, we found that 18 to 24 inch boxes is where you kind of maximize caliper, but also growth rate. So we would consider planting larger caliper sized boxes to address that concern, to get some evergreens to screen to the neighbors. So, yeah, I I've done a lot of research, worked with our rest on this particular issue. And, you know, in the past, we've gone too big and then they sit there and they don't grow for years. Smaller, healthy trees, you know, in the appropriate sized box to grow faster. So.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
On that point, with this has come up in previous conversations with previous projects. I've had discussions with Parks and Rec about this. And they said that if you plant more than a three inch caliber tree at the initial setting, and chances are it's not going to, like Mike said, it's not going to grow for a long time or it may even die. So he was recommending to me to be careful on pushing like, hey, let's put a 10 inch caliber tree from the forest right here and hope that it continues to grow and survive. So I just wanted to point that out for counsel.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, one pro.
So Joe, three inch caliber trees, five feet, six feet tall to start. What's the height of the building, that two story building on the west side?
Mayor, Councilmember Perot, I can answer that question. The the building up to the peak of the roof at two story is 29 feet, four inches.
I have one more question.
Counsel, one pro.
So and and if Joe can answer this or or the applicant or both possibly, with these two, with the the current use to the west, which I don't know if it's in the county or in the city, and what we have on our comprehensive plan for this property, what would be an appropriate transition? Do we have any code related to a transition from this use to the neighboring property, especially if it's in the county?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perot, the those two lots most adjacent are actually are two. So they are in the city. The rest of that subdivision does appear to be in the county, though. Well, there is one little pocket in the southeast corner. Code does not, from my understanding, speak to the transition. There's no requirements in code. However, the comprehensive plan speaks with about it quite often. Initially, when the applicant discussed putting apartments there, you know, to help some recoup some of the ones lost, they were hoping for three story. And I said, good luck. And I think two story, like two stories everywhere. You townhomes were discussed last time. Nobody builds one story townhomes. I just, I I literally have never seen it. I I don't see everything, obviously, but it's been a bit of imagery I've seen of the homes here. So I think that two stories is an adequate transition. I mean, I know that there are larger lots, 100%. I get that. And when you have the number of units to that, I mean, through design with the applicant, we could work if council wants to have another provision to minimize the windows facing west. I think that that's plausible. I don't know how that would necessarily work, you know, quality of life for the apartment residents. But I know there are ways to minimize some of those things through adequate design. Obviously, landscaping is the best screening method, both for noise as well as visual, but that does take time. I I do agree with that. We could definitely work with the applicant to ensure that that buffer is planted well in advance of that building being constructed to at least help initialize some of that growth in the area. But transition wise, I do believe that minimally the height. I I can't say I have qualms with that.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor and trainer.
So I guess a question for you, Deborah, and for Mike. Would you guys be amenable to starting the landscaping process before construction to sort of give a head start to the the buffer there? Would that work?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Strater, I'll let Mike kind of weigh in. I can just tell you from a practical construction development standpoint, it's often problematic to plant trees and then go grade a site for construction. And so there is some practicality to it. But as far as within reason of, you know, that it makes sense, the landscaping would survive and you've got the site graded. And then I'll let Mike respond to that question about earlier fronting of landscaping.
I I'm probably one of the few developers I know that actually go to the tree nurseries and select trees, because you could, you know, tie our hands to three inch caliper. But it's it matters about the health of the tree, the specimen of the tree. Who's the producer? What's their history and what's their reputation? You know, we could plant them early, but oftentimes, you know, you have conflicts with construction and they're damaged. So, yeah, it would satisfy satisfy a condition. I don't know long term if you're going to get the, you know, the maximum growth out of out of a young tree by doing that. So I I just don't know if it really accomplishes the goal. I think it checks a box, but oftentimes I just see trees damaged, especially if you're doing that wall. You're going to have a footing, a concrete footing. So to get in there, to excavate, deform, I would say there's a high likelihood you're going to damage trees.
Mr. Mayor.
I do think it's a good, I think it's a good buffer residential, residential and the two stories. You know, could be, we looked at office and it just feels more appropriate, a more natural relationship.
Counselor and trainer.
Thank you. Yeah, I I understand what you're saying. I I don't know that we need a condition like specifying the caliper trees or I I think it's more just, you know, an understanding. I I feel like we're getting to an understanding that you'll try to find the species of tree that will grow the quickest, that will provide the best transition with the neighbor, that, you know, you'll plant the trees as soon as it's viable and functional. I don't think we need to necessarily create a bunch of conditions. You know, I'm assuming as a long term real estate developer that you'll be doing business here in the future and we're going to trust you to do the right thing. I just want to know that you're saying, yep, that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to make sure to do my very best to plant the trees that are going to grow quick, that are going to look good as soon as I can. That's just what I'm looking to hear, not necessarily a, I don't think we're going to create a bunch of conditions to get to the right place. I think just, I'd like to hear you affirm what I just said. That's it.
I know, Councilwoman Strater, I definitely affirm what you said. And I'm very passionate about landscape. I work very hard on how I select our teams and the species and how we relate to the environment. And just, yes, of course, finding the best, healthiest species that are coming out of of quality nurseries and then maintaining those trees. You know, I'm on my sites frequently looking at the landscape and I'm a very hands on operator.
Counselor and trainer.
That's perfect. Thank you. I appreciate you saying that. And I I can tell you, you do take a lot of care and a lot of attention into that. And I just as a general comment for the neighbors, I mean, this does appear to be, at least appear to be, and I I have faith that it will be a very high quality development. This looks very upscale. It looks like there's a lot of thought being put into the landscaping and the amenities. And I I think it's a much better fit now that it's three stories and two stories on that west side as opposed to the four stories that initially showed up. Looks like the parking makes sense. So I just wanted to say I appreciate all the changes. I know you had to make a lot of changes and that does impact your bottom line, but I do think that this is a better fit. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor. Counselor.
Deborah, I want to make sure I understood what, something you said when you talked about the setback on the two story. And that it was, I think that's at 25 feet instead of, I think, 15 is required.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
Multi families 10 foot setback from property line.
Thank you, Joe. Mr. Mayor, continue with Deborah here. So you're increasing that significantly. But then you mentioned something about the buffer, you know, in addition to landscaping. But I was trying, curious, I think you've got the house, you've got the setback, and then you'll have the masonry fence. Is that how that works in the back?
Mayor, Councilmember Hoagland, yes, the buffer on our side is that 25 feet that will include the additional screening that you've described. The practical just point of noting is that we also are 75 to 85 feet between the existing property building and the property line. So putting those together is over 100 feet of buffer, which is significant. You know, and and certainly helps as that landscape is growing and maturing.
I got that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor and Pearl.
Thank you. So the structure itself there on the west side, is it going to have balconies that overlook the properties to the west? And I guess I don't. The trees are a factor for me, however, if they're deciduous, if they're fast growing, they're typically deciduous. And what deciduous, in which case they're not, there's not going to be leaves half the year anyway. So may or may not be great buffers, depending on what's planted. But are you planning on on increasing the, so first question, are there going to be balconies? Second question, are you planning on increasing the number of required trees and or vegetation? And I'm not saying that you should, I just am asking if you are. And then third, was there any? Any, I guess, I can't think of the word. Did you attempt to maybe put the parking on the very west side of the building and have it come behind the building and and move that building towards Center Point? I imagine you went through a variety of different options as you were changing this. So if you could share your thoughts on that as well.
Mayor, if I could ask staff, would you mind pulling up our presentation again? Because I think looking at the cross section to that west side could be helpful as we talk through that issue so we can kind of illustrate the distance we're talking about. And then to start addressing those questions as best I can and Mike can jump in. I don't know that we have a landscape plan that's exactly mapped out yet since we're not at a conditional use permit level yet. So I mean, we can just talk about what's proposed and what's showing here. So this, I think, helps illustrate the the distance. Obviously, that's with mature landscaping, but I mean, you've got complete screening. As far as balconies, you know, the city does have a a minimum 80 foot square foot private open space requirement for all units, which makes, which is great because it makes these units livable. These are residents of your city, too, and so they will have that. I presume, and Mike can correct me if I'm wrong, those would be on the backside and that they would enjoy that space there of their balconies. And Mike can speak to the the site plan iterations if if they considered the parking in the back. I think from from my perspective, I would just suggest that's not great buffering to a neighbor when you've got headlights and cars as opposed to a building that blocks the street. But whether that was even feasible there when you've got parking that is along the street. I'll let Mike address that comment.
I guess, so we, I mean, the for sure, I'd certainly want to plant evergreens and try to, you know, some some deciduous to have a nice mix of fall color. But certainly evergreens to to have some permanent screening. Yeah, just to expand on Deb's comment about the parking field, we do try to avoid it. Or at least feel that the buffer in the building serves as a better barrier, you know, avoids excessive idling and emissions, car alarms, potential crime, things things of that sort. And then with respect to the balconies, yeah, we have that 80 foot per unit requirement. I do have our architect on the phone or on the Zoom, so he might be able to speak to it in greater detail. But there will be some balconies to to the west.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
Yes, sir. To speak more on the site plan, to put I, putting the parking on the west side, I don't see how they'd meet fire code just and or ACHD, because you're going to have to have two points of access to Center Point Way. Because I thought about the same thing when I first saw this. I was like, well, why can't we just flip it? But they won't meet the offset requirement to the intersection of Center Point and Eustick at the north end. And then you can't just have one access because now it's going to be more than 150 feet. So it just functionally, I don't see how it would work physically in the world, though I understand your appointment. Councilwoman.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor and Pearl.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, I didn't have as much concern about vehicles being on the very west side in this case because there's going to be a masonry wall there as far as headlights and whatnot goes. There'll there'll be a nice barricade. But I just thought that might add some more visual buffer space between the existing homes and and the balconies. So can, I just wanted to ask a question about Center Point Way showing on the new rendering that it's approximately 30 feet across that the is there a plan to put no parking signs along that section? Given what is happening with Center Point Way to the the north of Eustick, it is challenging to get through there. And I'm wondering if that's something that the the applicant has had a conversation with ACHD about.
Mayor, Councilmember Perot, I'm not aware of that discussion happening with ACHD. Mike or Brandon can correct me if that's wrong. But we are not planning parking along there. And if ACHD were amenable to it, I don't know why we would care about no parking signs.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor and Pearl.
Thank you. I would appreciate that. I think, you know, 30 feet is not that much when you have two vehicles on either side and you have two way traffic. They're going to have stacking there. What's the the distance between Eustick and the property line to the south on Center Point?
I'm looking to our civil engineer for this.
Evening, Brandon McDougald, address 1100 West Idaho Street in Boise. I I don't have the exact mention here, but I'm going to speculate as best I can based on the scale of the drawing. So I think your question was, what's the distance from Eustick to the south property line along Center Point? It's it's going to be somewhere around 300, 350 feet.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor and Pearl.
Okay, the expectation would be that cars would hopefully not line up past the the intersection of the entrances to the two buildings, which is 150 feet or so. So how many vehicles can can stack in the making a ride onto Eustick? How many vehicles can line up there?
Approximately eight plus vehicles. Got a dedicated right. 16.
So on Center Point, there's going to be dedicated right and left and 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 then a lane to head north. So three.
I believe at the intersection, it is currently striped. I don't know that that continues all the way. Wouldn't continue all the way.
Mr. Mayor, may I add on to that response as well? Councilmember Perot, I would also point out that the access points were evaluated with the traffic analysis, too. And we've lowered our density. And so the overall use of that intersection will be less and it was found to be functional.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
To further that point, I, again, I understand Councilman Perot's concerns there. I have concern whether this is approved or unapproved. And with the previous use, I don't see that access point going east, west across Center Point changing at all because of the requirements of fire to have 150 feet, no more than 150 feet in any kind of parking or having, they got to have meet offset requirements for ACHD because I was going to show this, and I guess I will, to make sure that we're all on the same page here about which roads are private, which ones are public. So this is the site currently, give or take, is aerial imagery from a few years ago. Public road is my understanding is this loop road that goes around here is the public. Maybe not way here. And then this is private, private here. Center Point is public road. So they got to meet the offset here and to Eustick. So I don't imagine that that access point is going to change to help with the stacking, unfortunately. I think ACHD would not allow it really to be pushed any further south. Though we can ask, because again, ACHD won't comment on MDAs, but they will send a staff report with the CUP. And I can have those discussions with ACHD as well. And I don't believe Center Point is wide enough to have on street parking currently as a commercial collector, which I agree, I don't think we want that. And the applicant's not proposing that either. So I I will work with ACHD for sure to help facilitate that.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor and Pearl.
How then does that get restricted? Because ACHD won't put up those no parking signs, right? We would need to ask the applicant with the DA to do so. We would need to ask the applicant with the DA to do so.
Councilwoman Pearl, it's probably going to be, we could require it through a DA, but I know ACHD and Fire Chief Bonjana work really well together on these types of, hey, let's sign this no parking, fire lane kind of thing to help out. And I haven't seen ACHD say no to that. And because this public road is, it is where it is, and it's not really extending, as Deb said, a thoroughfare through another subdivision forever and ever, like most local streets. I don't see that they would have qualms with that, and I don't see fire having qualms either.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I just have a question that I'm kind of more curious about. Is there any precedent for ACHD working within neighborhood to turn a private road into a public road? Do we know, has it ever happened? I mean, this, it just occurs to me that East Picard and Seville are going to be taking on a lot more traffic than I'm sure was originally thought. Is there any, has there ever been an example of that happening? How does that work legally? I'm looking everywhere because I'm, I don't know who should answer this question, maybe legal.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure, Joe.
Thanks. I, my understanding, ACHD puts this in their staff reports every single time there's private roads proposed about if they are going to future, in the future, be requested to be public roads. They say that additional right-of-way has to be dedicated, and they'll have to be constructed per their standards. I don't know of where this has happened, but they will require those things. So my understanding is that the HOA who maintains and operates the private lanes would have to go to ACHD and start that process. It is not a process I believe would involve the city when it came to that, but Mr. Neri can speak to that.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I can basically piggyback on what Joe said. I can't recall ever seeing that, mostly because again, they're constructed, when they're constructed, they don't meet the standards. They don't always have sidewalks and other things on them because of that. And they are proposed as gated communities sometimes in the past, sometimes not. So that was a decision point made by the developer 20 years ago when they, when they annexed. So I agree with Joe, I think it's pretty unlikely just because of the construction standards would be necessary. You'd end up having to remove yards or house, or you know, parts of house, parts of lots. I, I don't think it's very feasible. They could certainly look at gating them, and that's another applicant the HOA could make, but I don't know what the standards or requirements that ACHD would have to do that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Yeah, so different follow-up. So if, if this subdivision wanted to become a gated community, what would the process be? I mean, is there a process in the city for them to apply to do that? Usually we see them come in that way, and I know we have pretty specific requirements around gated communities. It's not something that we really encourage. I think we really believe that the connectivity is extremely important as a city. But if a subdivision were to aspire to, to gate themselves later, how, is there a process for that? How would that work?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Schrader, I, I don't know that there is. I mean, we have a miscellaneous application, so I definitely would have to go through ACHD as well. Have to be reviewed by the Fire Marshal. I mean, obviously, there's a lot of standards that would have to be met to take private streets and now put gates on them instead. But I don't know that it's impossible to be done. I can't recall that ever happening, but I don't know that it couldn't be done. But that's, again, the HOA has to be the one to be applied for that.
Thanks.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Is this about the MDA application that we're focusing on in front of us this evening? I don't want to take us too far down a rabbit hole about what others can and can't do in an area that really doesn't, in my opinion, have way, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I just want to stay focused on what's before us today. There, this still has to go through the. CUP and. CUP and, yeah, there's other processes for a lot of these details that we're getting into. I know it's, it's a, it's a, I just want to make sure we're staying focused on the thing in front of us. For what we are here to do this evening. So Joe, if.
I recant.
Okay. Not that they're not good questions, just I don't know how much they would weigh in, in a review.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
To kind of steer onto this applicant, I, I remember this exact discussion when this was approved, by the way, and the pros and cons of private streets, and the reason that there is that little hook in Bourbon and Picard trying to balance those interests. And when you take private streets and build them to different design specs, because that's what you want, this is what can happen down the road. But this, this was all done eyes wide open, knowing these challenges were going to come. So a couple of comments and then a question for you, Deb. The public is spot on in their question and concern about traffic. You know, we all, we just, we lose sight of the fact that it's, you know, comparing against the grasped barren field versus anything. It's going to increase traffic, unfortunately, so. I look at it similar to how it's been presented, that, that the traffic impacted this application is a, is a certain reduction in any of the challenges of traffic here. And that's just a, that is a certainty. It's, it's definitely more than zero compared to what you have with a vacant field. But it is a, from a traffic perspective, a clear improvement over what the existing entitled right was with the previous DA that you're changing. So issues with cut-through traffic and stacking are, are greatly diminished with this application compared to the existing entitlement. The one thing that, that your redesign didn't have, which kind of surprised me, because I think you really did a good job of, of addressing the concerns. And Mike, I hats off to you in, in being willing to do that. Those two properties on the west, and, and I forget which council member brought it up, but I thought we would have seen, you know, a single-story dental office type design, maybe one or two offices on that west side. It would be permitted to do so, and certainly would be attractive, greater transition to those two properties on Leslie Way. So talk a little bit about that decision as to whether that was a viable option to have those, you know, a couple of small dental office, medical office example, you know, professional offices as opposed to two-story apartments on that western portion. I don't know who wants to take it, but I thought there was a comment from council suggesting that would be a good use of that, you know, instead of a parking lot. It seemed to make sense, so maybe that's still a viable option as well.
Mayor, Councilmember Borton, I'll just briefly start and then turn it to Mike, who I think has carefully thought about what we're presenting to you tonight. But my recollection from the last hearing is a number of different uses were suggested and asked the applicant to consider, including two-story townhomes. So I, I think with that, I'll let Mike kind of walk through his thinking on why he's proposed a two-story residential.
Yeah, oh, since we last met, I actually did some research and spoke with office leasing experts. It could be one-story, it could be a two-story office building as well. So I don't think that necessarily, you know, solves some of the, the concerns. And it just, it's more harmonious keeping residential with a residential development where they can benefit from the other amenities. So we were trying to address the comment, include a townhome, townhome type product. And also, it was suggested for, for commercial and thought that this was the best solution. You know, wouldn't necessarily be a one-story dental office. If that one dental office is in the market, looking, looking for that product type, it could be a two-story as well. But again, you have the same, the same issues. And I just think, in my experience, from a programming standpoint, long-term, keeping the residential next to residential will seem more consistent with the neighborhood and feel. Just my professional opinion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Is that more consistent with whom?
The, the use, the tenant, the tenant type and tenant mix. It wouldn't necessarily be, I mean, a dental office or a physical therapist. It could be medical supply tenant, it could be an office type use that.
A daycare.
A daycare or a medical supply company that doesn't, I don't think has the synergy in that kind of experience that I spoke to, where people are, you know, they're living there, they're working there, they're playing there, they're having barbecues and creating community. And I, I really think holistically about the experience you're trying to create in this project. And I don't, not to say it wouldn't work, and you couldn't necessarily find that. There's, you can pencil new construction. I've done some kinder care work in my, in my past, and it's hard to pencil the cost of construction. There's very few users when you talk about childcare for new construction, usually taking second generation space. So again, kind of going back to the programming and the experience, we like to think that they work better together when you're trying to create that environment.
Okay. Thanks.
Also additional questions for the applicant? For now, I want you to take a seat.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I'm happy to kick off a, just a discussion. I, I appreciate the changes. I think losing 18% of the units was a significant concession that helps this development fit in better with Meridian overall and with the neighborhood in this location. I think the masonry wall is an important aspect that we include that. And obviously, the height limitations and Councilwoman Pearl had a good suggestion about requesting with ACHD to have no parking signs on Center Point. I thought that made a lot of sense. So I think with those conditions, you know, I'd be in support of this at this point. I was very opposed to it, but I, I think at this point with these changes, it makes more sense. I also feel like the scale of the building on the west side is not incompatible with the surrounding uses. It's two stories, it's not, yes, comparable to what a home would be. I, I think with the commitments the developer made around landscaping and, I don't think we need a lot of conditions of approval around that, but I think with their commitment on that, that we heard here tonight on the record, I think, you know, I'm comfortable. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
On that point, we talked about conditions concerning stories, but I know we reference height, not stories. So looking at Joe, when we talk about, if, if this were to proceed with DA conditions, do you need us to specify height? Or when we reference stories, do you do the conversion in the DA to, to the applicable height that corresponds with it?
Councilman Borton, I put stories within my recommended additional DA provision in my presentation, but I usually don't do the calculations, but it also depends on what the discussion of council is. If their discussion is regarding more a actual number, you know, 45 feet or something versus three-story. You know, I, I mean, you can make a three-story building as tall as a four-story building, depending on how you construct it. So I leave that purview up to council, and I try to digest that and put that into the language of the DA afterwards, if there's revisions. So it is CG, the current zoning, so technically the height limit is 65 feet. What I have put in was brief, or sorry, three-story max for the center and two-story on the west side building. If you guys want to limit that to specific numbers, the only issue I run into is sometimes the way that we measure height versus, you know, when the applicant actually builds the building, oh, now they got a little bit of a steeper pitch roof, and now we're, are we over the 35 feet that we threw out there? And now we got to do an MDA for three feet of different, like, that personally is not worth your time to make those minor changes. But however you guys want to handle it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Olden. Yeah, one of the things that makes this a little different than some of the developments we, we handle is there's already an entitlement on this property to do certain things. And, and, you know, if this is brand new and they were coming here for a zoning application, those types of things, we have more flexibility to do some things. And that's why you look at things where, where the Villasport that had been approved, I mean, they were 65 feet from existing homes. And Deb, as you pointed out, now you're about 150 feet from existing homes to, to make that, make that work a little better from the first plan that was brought in, where they reduced traffic, units, reduction in units, a net reduction of 18%. And a 40% reduction in traffic from the previous use, which, and then we, we take that 18%. So that's, you know, it's, it's pushing it to where we're trying to make it a workable project, but also recognizing the neighbors and the impacts and those types of things. Unfortunately, we can't do everything. And, and dog poop in neighborhoods is a problem everywhere. Trust me, everyone's battling that one. But it, it certainly does, it does change the neighborhood to a degree, because there will be more traffic, there will be more people, and, and we're seeing that throughout our community. And what we try to do, especially where there's an entitlement already existing, is okay, how can we mitigate it to the best degree possible and still have a viable project? So I, I think this has struck the balance to, to make that happen. I, I think we've got encouragement, thanks to Councilwoman Schrader for, you know, going into landscaping that's the best possible. I don't think we do need to put any conditions on that, but at the same time, they'll pay attention to that. Also, I, I have no issues with the condition of no parking on Center Point in those areas. So I, I think we've come a long ways and appreciate the work that everyone has done. And the residents there who expressed concerns and, and certainly, error input was taken and made that a better project as well.
Additional questions, comments, motions to close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
If there's not other commentary at this point, I move that we close a public hearing.
Have a motion, is there any discussion? If not, on favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, you guys have it, and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I'll go ahead and try to make a motion, and we can have more discussion if needed. After considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, I move to approve file number H 2022-22-0035 as presented in the staff report for today's hearing date with the following modifications. We would strike provision, Roman numeral six, C6, would require the extension of the masonry wall on the west side of the property, as we discussed. Additionally, a new provision as part of the conditional use permit process, a limitation on the western building to a maximum of two stories in height, and a limitation of three stories on all other buildings. And then additionally, provision that we would encourage the applicant to work with ACHD to install no parking signs on Center Point Way if ACHD agrees.
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I'll be brief. Mike, Deb, you guys, I think, brought forth a really great project. I'm not in favor of it, I'll go against the motion. There was a really good question, I think, that was asked in the last meeting, which was just about council's feelings about multifamily in this particular area. And one of the things I think that council did really good on the previous DA for Villasport was really try and manage the negative impacts of the traffic, the way that particular project was laid out, and how it wouldn't impact homeowners kind of at their morning and PM commutes. This doesn't address that in, in a way that I'm, I'm supportive of. Mike, I've got no concern, I think you're going to build a stellar project that's going to be really appealing to a lot of people in our community. I hope you look to do projects like this in other parts of our community, particularly closer to the interstate. Kind of reading the tea leaves, I appreciate the work that you've done. I think the council's supportive, I just, it's, it's not a project, it's not a modification of the DA that I'm supportive of at this time.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Schrader.
Aye.
Pearl.
Aye.
Cavanagh. Borton.
Aye.
Oakland.
Aye.
Four ayes, one no, motion carries.
All ayes, one no, motion carries. With that, we will move on to our next items on the agenda, which is for ordinance. Item number 24 is ordinance number 22-1984. Ask the court to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an ordinance related to pavilion at Winsong, H2021-0102, for rezone of a parcel of land located in the southeast one quarter of the southeast one quarter of Section 35, Township 4 North, Range 1 West, Boise, Meridian. Ada County, Idaho, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 3.42 acres of land from the CC zoning district to the R40 zoning district in the Meridian City Code. Providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Council, if you've read this ordinance by title, is there anybody present who would like it read in its entirety? Seeing no one, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
I move that we approve ordinance number 22-1984 with the suspension of rules.
Have a motion, a second to approve ordinance number 22-1984 under suspension of the rules. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Schrader.
Aye.
Perot.
Aye.
Kavanagh.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Oakland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Next item up is item 25, which is ordinance number A-22-1979. Ask the court to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an amended ordinance related to H2021-0081 Vanguard Village subdivision, for rezone of a parcel of land located in the portions of the northeast one quarter of the southwest one quarter and the northwest one quarter of the southeast one quarter, and all of the southeast one quarter of the northwest one quarter of Section 15, Township 3 North, Range 1 West, Boise, Meridian, city of Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. Establishing determining the land use zoning classification of 7.06 acres from the CC zoning district to the HE zoning district, 17.38 acres from CC to HE zoning districts to the ME zoning district, 40.33 acres from the R40 CC and ME zoning districts to the R15 zoning district, and 1.1 acres from the HE to the CC zoning district in the Meridian City Code. Providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Council, if you've read this ordinance by title, is there anybody who would like it read in its entirety? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
I move that we approve ordinance A-22-1979 with the suspension of rules.
Have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Schrader.
Aye.
Perot.
Aye.
Kavanagh. Borton.
Aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. The items agreed to. Council, if you have any future meeting topics? Or do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Oakland.
I move we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. On favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. You guys have it. We are adjourned.